Yeah, that was kinda good.
And we find one of them is uh.
Um, there is something on the agenda. Double check the agenda versus your agenda for and make sure
It's having some kind of reckless.
Cause I feel like we added something to, oh, it was the pool pass, Jason.
Oh yeah.
Yes.
Just to make sure, just put, just to have a two second conversation about it that'll turn into thirty.
Alright. Yep. Alright, we got our recorder started.
Okay. Order's on.
Today is June first, uh, twenty twenty-three. This is a council work session in attendance. First off, council president Bruger is on vacation, uh, enjoying the beautiful New Jersey shore. Uh, I am councilperson Wolf. We have councilpersons Martin, um, McNamara, Cos and Camera. Uh, also in attendance, we have village planner Fisher and village, uh, uh, law director Jesse Shan. That's who we got.
No, I'm here.
Good.
Uh, no, I don't count you. And we have Mayor Sutter.
Oh. I'm. Did I go back to the pool?
I said your name like four times in my.
I know. You looked at me like, and I was like, wait, I'm here just for the record because if I'm absent the next time, I can say I was.
Yeah. Alright. Yep, uh, so here we go. Committee reports. Anything we can look forward to hearing from you, uh, Safety?
Well, I've been getting emails, um, about perceived or, you know, perceived versus actual speed concerns, which I know the chief is aware of. The most recent responsement to, or the most recent, um, I guess you could say person that contacted me in email mentioned, um, some of those, you know, the little light up things that says your speed.
Mm-hmm.
That's not, that's not an unreasonable idea in high traffic areas. I'd have to know how much they cost before I could formally recommend to finance or what have you.
We have one.
But I'll, I'll do a little bit of homework on that.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's broken.
Uh, yeah, we have, we have like the trailer one, but it is broken.
Yeah, you know, you guys know the ones like when you're coming on to two seventy?
But. Like a permanent sign is what you're gonna.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I don't feel that to be an unreasonable idea. I would just need to do a little bit of homework on what they cost.
Yeah.
Some are solar as well, so I think there's some.
Yeah, solar would be the best, the right way. I also think that to some people, those are challenges more than they are determines. So.
I do not disagree with that either.
Right, I think the same dodo who's speeding down our streets is gonna see that and say, ooh, let's, let's see.
See how much they can get.
Yeah, let's see, how big that number can get. So, I, I welcome, I welcome you doing your research and bringing it to council, but
I'll do a little bit of homework on it.
you know, there would have to be conversations. Anything else from Safety?
Yeah. I mean, outside of, you know, one or two different, you know, speed issues, whether actual or perceived, again, I'm not an expert in the judgment of that, but nothing major at this point.
What would be interesting is if we could get that unit like we had once before and actually get real data again, because we.
I think the speed trailer was great, cause you can, the thing that I always, that it's taken me a little while to realize is you have a couple of different people in a couple of different places and I'm, I'm just gonna say this, it's usually the exact same people that continue the perceived, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna say it is or isn't, uh, the perceived speed. You have a couple of those people, so it would be nice to move the trailer from that particular place to that particular place to this particular place.
Well, so a couple of years ago, Chief Delp was able to get like a unit that he.
I would not agree with that.
I believe we have that one.
Yeah, so, but it was, it was not, you, you wouldn't really see it if you didn't know it was there.
Right.
Correct. Correct.
So it was hidden, and he moved it to various places in the village over the course of a month. And we got real data of real speeds on the roads. And what we saw in the real data of real speeds on our roads.
The real roads, yes.
Of our real roads was that there wasn't a, a speeding problem, right? That average speeds were at twenty-five miles an hour, that the, you know, there were a handful that were over, but not a lot, and, and like the only ones that were in the data that were egregious, we were actually even able to map back to police officers going lights and sirens, right?
Yeah.
So, so, but I think the best response to people calling and saying, or emailing you saying, there's a speeding problem, is to have that kind of.
I think that.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to renewing that or doing that again at all.
So. Yeah, so if you could.
Oh, yeah, well.
We can multi, multi-brong it, yeah.
Yeah. Talk to, talk to Delp and see if we can do that again.
Right.
But yeah, that's the.
And if he doesn't have it, we, I would even be open to have, yeah, getting one, see how much it is, because we should do that every year.
Yeah. Getting one. Right.
Right? Because every year, when the weather gets nice, people start saying, they're going so fast, but.
Never in all my days have they gone this.
And it's, well, and I, I'm not gonna say that there's not. You have Uber drivers that, you know, but you can't sit an officer in one particular place to catch that one Uber driver that might drive through here lots of week.
Right.
So, I mean, we get them on Jordan Road, believe that or not, but it's, you know, it's usually that one or two DoorDash or Uber, or you know, whatever it is.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's worth doing some homework.
Sorry. Or, or it's, um, councilperson Cos.
DoorDash. DoorDash.
What is it? What'd you say?
You're the speeder.
I'm the speeder.
No, I'm the speed.
I, I know.
You're the one ordering the Uber's.
I'm the one ordering this.
Oh, there's that too.
But in my defense, in the instructions, I, you say the speed limit is twenty-five in the special instructions.
Uh-huh.
I think, I think that's what's doing it. They're saying screw that special instruction. You, you have once again called out.
Yeah. Yeah, that goes.
If we have a totally problematic track area, we could show more police records.
Correct, absolutely.
But that would be another thing that data could, could help us, right? If there was, in fact, a stretch of road we could prove was more problematic than another,
Absolutely.
that is reason to target it for enforcement.
Right. Well, and again, we do have the increased traffic to the pool. We know that because the pool is now open. We do have the increased traffic to the park area because it's better weather. So we know that we already have those particular areas. I know the chief, you know, the chief just the other day was sitting out in front of, um.
I know, I'm crazy.
The pool. So, I mean, they do move around quite a bit, so it's, it is, it's a matter of knowing that we have these things that are now open, we need to address those and make sure that we're monitoring, but it would be nice. We'll ask the chief tomorrow.
Right. Yep, Safety, anything else from you?
No, those are the topics I have.
Alright, services, anything we can look forward to hearing from you in a report?
Bidders are due next week, I think. Twelve-ish.
For both leaf and trash?
Uh, both leaf and trash.
So cool.
Um, we have had a couple of people reach out to us, not to overstep what you're doing, but I have had a couple of people reach out from Ronkey and local waste, so I am expecting those two, same two bidders that we've had numerous times, um.
Anybody from Republic?
I have not heard from Republic yet. So, Ronkey and local waste so far. Um, doesn't mean they're not going to, I just, I haven't had a physical phone call or email from them. So I believe those are due around the twelve-ish. Once we get those, then we'll schedule, um, I'll have you schedule a service meeting. That way we can actually look at all of them.
Well, keep it together, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll look at those. And then as far as the leaf bid goes, um, I'm just, uh, maybe I shouldn't say this on public record, but the people that typically do bid on it, I made sure that they knew it was live, and I did not do anything any different. I, um, I let Brad know it was live, I let McKenney's know it was live, and, um, Ohio Mall should ask when we put it live to make sure. So I have let those three people know if any, so I'm not trying to like solicit, but they know that it's on the website.
Right.
That's the information that all three did receive. Um, so if anybody has anything else, or anybody else they would like for me to reach out to, or somebody just wants to say again, I don't like doing anything other than saying it's live on our website. So, if you guys have somebody, let me know. I'd be more than happy. We got another week to try to, you know, I don't wanna say solicit, but advise people that it is there and available.
Anything else from services we can expect in our report? Alright, next on the list is finance. That one's me. No meeting. Our next big thing is the tax budget, which I believe needs to be done in July. Uh, so we'll be meeting some point in this month with, uh, fiscal officer Will Check to see what's doing. Uh, recreation and parks.
Yay, pool's open.
Whee!
Yes, by the skin of our teeth. Um, yeah, up until that morning, we did not have a working pump.
Oops.
So, um, yeah, they powered it up, it did not work. We had to get parts, replace the parts, had to get more parts.
Pool looks great.
We opened about an hour before, or got it running about an hour before the pool actually opened on Saturday, so. But, good weekend so far. I mean, even with graduation, um, I did, I saw you at the pool, but I didn't see you make your plunge, so.
I did, I jumped in, it was cold.
Okay, yeah.
We have to see it on video.
Yeah.
Nobody videos this, but yeah, it was cold. Not as cold as last year, but it was cold.
Okay. Yeah, it's warmed up a little, but, um, but everything's going well so far. Um, we've hired our staff for the concession stand. I think John, John might need another lifeguard or two, but I think he's pretty well-staffed. Um, we, we found a couple of the little projects we needed to do down there that we've, we had to replace some, the, the lifeguard stands have rusted through enough that they became a safety hazard and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So those parts have been ordered and should be in tomorrow, I think, but, um.
Nice.
Overall, I mean.
Do we want to talk, uh, before, yeah, so the dirt at the pool that was raised, so the construction, well, go ahead.
Yeah, we can talk about, yeah.
Just, just questions, and I'm just referring to you a little bit because I know nothing about this, but it has, um, the track and field, as much as we are excited about it, it is making a really difficult pool season. Um, the dirt is flying everywhere. Somebody had mentioned that they should be watering it down before. I, I know nothing about this, I'm just telling you to EPA people. When Jason was there as well, um, I mean, the amount of dirt that's all over the pool chairs, in the filters, it is, it is creating, um, maybe it was a little windier today, which I don't think it was. It, it's awful, and I, that, that's all I can say. I mean, it is.
So, we obviously have very dry conditions right now.
We do.
Which is not helping. Uh, I think, no one, usually when we talk about, um, dirt clean off, we're talking about how it gets into the roadways.
Yes. It's not.
But in this particular case, we have an active, uh, pool situation next to an active construction site, which inevitably you're going to get dirt like on a tree, on everything, right? It's gonna be, it's gonna be no fun.
Exactly.
So I will be happy to make a call, uh, tomorrow.
Yeah.
And see if we can work something out with the school district. I, they've been good neighbors and I don't see why they wouldn't, I won't make a call.
The great news is, is at least they're not there on Saturdays and Sundays.
Right.
So that has been really nice.
Well, so that's good for, for noise problem, but it's probably worse for dust problem.
Potentially, the, uh.
Right, because if it's hot and dry, then nobody's there hosing it down to keep it from flying.
Yeah. That's true. Right. Well, nobody's doing any, any of that right now. There's no hosing, there's no.
Well, they, they, they may have, right before they leave, on Friday, pool opened on Saturday, but Saturday, Sunday, Monday, nobody was there to wet it down
Yeah, that's true.
Were you there today?
Keep it from kicking up.
Uh-huh, it was awful.
Which is a Friday, Thursday?
Today was worse than any day, I feel like.
Yeah, it was bad.
Probably the active work is stirring it.
Yeah.
Right, doesn't.
Can they put up like a tarp or something on the fence?
I don't know.
It's going extremely high.
You have to have a big, you have to have a big tarp, right? About, about twenty feet, thirty feet.
No, I mean.
Yeah.
More like multiple tarps.
I think the other tough, tough control airborne part.
And I think, I think the other question is, is how long are we expecting that, that annual part? We're talking.
Two something. They get, if you.
Due to go, I mean, unfortunately, the, the project is due to go probably till, out the beginning of the school year.
Which I expect that, but the dirt part.
Well, well, I take that back. There was a conversation not that long ago about when that would start. So I think, I think it'll die down significantly about thirty days, because they, they are gonna make it active before the pool season starts, but let me, let me verify a couple of things.
That's fine. It was just.
And, and you may get aware of what's going on. They, they don't wanna recover your own dirt, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So we'll do whatever is reasonable.
You can see my car just from sitting out there today.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, I mean, just to give you an idea, it was parked at the far end of the pool, because I was smart enough since yesterday.
Right.
Right, that's true.
So, but again, it was just a conversation. Um, numerous people have been asking, is there anything that we can do? Because the chairs are disgusting, everything's disgusting, the crotch bros, and it's.
Make a call.
I think the, the other concern, um.
And there isn't over.
You do there, so when you, when you dig into the dirt, you're gonna get into organic smells, and then that's what you're probably smelling.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you, till anything, anything below a couple of feet, when they start, um, you even have that stuff that's been there for a long time, and it's exposed to oxygen, and then suddenly you're gonna get that smell. And it's, it's, it's going.
And the twenty to thirty feet would be pretty accurate, I would say that, because it was going super, I mean, it wasn't like, you know.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Unless we put a dome on it, it's gonna go up and suck the dust.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would have to be extremely high.
Yeah.
Right, that's reasonable to be able to load it down.
If you don't want it to be full.
But, I was gonna say that I think the other concern that we, we're seeing and is that the level of that field is very high compared to our pool.
Right.
And it's going right up to the fence, and so all that water's gonna go somewhere when it starts to rain. And I don't know that they put in any sewer system back there.
You mean, well, it's, so from an engineering standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, the water will sheet away from the pool. It is not, you're not going to get water into the pool area, right? Once it's finished now, it's always an issue with, now, there should be still fences, there should be things like that around the edge line.
It's buried.
Yeah.
Should be there. I, I'll bring that up, but, but, you know, construction, construction timeframe, when we get a heavy rain, it can be difficult,
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that actually?
Yeah.
As we know from this school's construction, people get water or they don't want it, and it's, because it's not a finished grid at the moment.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So we'll bring those concerns up.
Not supposed to rain at least ten more days, so.
Right.
Alright.
Right, it's just us.
This is wild.
This is wild.
There was also the, what else did you have? Didn't you say one more thing? There was the pool passes, yeah. Um, so, so our ten-pack membership, we didn't raise the price of the ten-pack membership.
The pool passes. This is just a question.
I think, I feel like we had a discussion about it, should we raise them, should we not? The issue came in that, you know, Monday, we did raise the price of our holiday to a hundred fifty dollars. Well, and some people are buying the eight, the eighty-dollar pack of ten
To use on holidays.
to use on the holidays, and so potent, like, we had one person use all ten of them on that day.
So instead of making a hundred fifty dollars, we made eighty. So there's a huge, and so, again, we don't, we've talked about it.
We were just, John said, can you guys talk about it? And I said, yes.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything to change for this year, but put it in the, in the tickler file for when it gets discussed for next year,
Yeah.
what defensive strategies we can use, like maybe, maybe the eighty pack is not valid on holidays.
Yeah.
Or, right, but I don't think, I think at this point you've already sold them based on a no, no.
No.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, you know, there was a, there was an understanding at that time and to change that understanding.
I mean, last year we sold sixty of them the whole summer, so.
How, are we selling more this year?
I mean, well, the summer's not over, but I think we're on track. I think, you know, people buy them at the beginning of the summer, they don't tend to buy them towards the end, so.
Already. We're on track.
Yeah, the, yeah, that was, that was it on that. It's just a matter of, now, I think then the follow-up question is, and this might be a Jesse question,
Yeah.
would it be harmful to remove it as like, not remove it from lunch, not anything like that, but we do have a flyer. Is it necessary that it's on the flyer? Where, and I'm not saying take it off the website, I'm not saying, but we do have a couple of things, just so, and, and again, I, I'm not trying to be shady, I, so if it appears to be that way, let's leave it alone.
Sure. What you're saying is just to remove the, the.
Just so it's not as advertised.
Don't, don't advertise it.
Uh, yeah, I didn't think there's a legal concern that's, that's a manager, like, you can run a sale and not tell anybody about it.
No, I'd love to, totally.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Right.
Know what you're getting.
And I think at that point, the only reason that I've, I felt that might be okay is, the people that have been coming for the pool for a long time would know that that exists and why take that away from, um, at least for this year, like you're saying, it's a conversation I'm next year. But for the people that do come with a family of ten, and they realize that, oh, this is so much cheaper, they've never been there before, I'm not trying to be mean, but, you know, it's just one of those that, I don't wanna call it an oversight on our part, and that's their problem.
Well, I think it's an oversight on, on our part, that's, I think that's fair. I just, or, you know what it is, it's a unintended consequence.
Yeah.
Is what it really is, right? We, we, we thought about it and it just, we didn't think of that.
Yes. Okay, so that's a call. I mean, do you guys want to remove it? Do you want to leave it alone? I, I mean, it doesn't hurt my feelings either way.
I would just leave it alone, and if we, if we eat, look, if, if this happens ten times, we eat four hundred bucks, I, that four hundred dollars is not what makes or breaks the pool, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay.
My.
Speak otherwise, I just.
I'm fine with that. I, just a conversation that we know that, and this is literally, that's how you, that's how you find the things to fix next year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Grill rental.
Yeah, so we have the grill that we bought from the Park Fund, Parkland Fund, that was at the, right?
Yeah, that big old flat?
Yes, the flat top. And, uh, we talked about it last year about that, uh, people can use it, but we never kind of set any fees for it, if we're gonna have any fees for it.
I have a quick, this is my opinion, council makes the decision. I feel like the moving of a grill is a lot more difficult than the moving of a, the tent rentals. So I don't know, I, I, I'm, I'm, if you're renting it and it's at the pool and people are using it at the pool or something, but I would hate for people to load it up in their truck and take it off of the truck.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's a, yeah, I think it's a, I, I was thinking it stays at the pool and then.
It's like a black stove, ready, right?
Yeah.
If they. Perfect, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Not that we move it around, but if people wanted to use it for something.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that'd be fine in my book.
Huh?
Now.
I hate that I am the sky, but I feel like there's a lot of, uh, liability in renting someone a propane-powered, uh, instrument of potential death, right? Like, that's.
Have a waiver.
That's.
Let it stay at the pool.
Huh?
Oh, I did too, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not looking for it to transform.
Yeah, 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 better, better, better than, than stay there, that it's.
Oh, this is unsafe.
Within a certain area.
Yeah, then, then it, then it get lifted and moved and jostled, right? That all just adds more risk.
Right.
Right. Right.
Right.
But, you know, all, all it takes is somebody to, you know, doesn't, you know, doesn't turn it off properly, and now you've got, now you've got propane leaking, leaking, and then, you know, Debbie, or no, pardon me, Vanessa Baker is sitting next to it, draft's off her vape, and there's a smarts, boom, right? We've, we've got, we've got problems, so.
I guess I'm like, I don't know.
You don't have a waiver.
Yeah, I do want.
Yeah, um, two, which, so, A, yes, we would need a waiver, in my opinion. We would also need, um,
Yeah.
Uh, or, no, we don't need, my question is, do we need legislation to add that fee? Is that a fee that we can just, because all of our other fees.
This is just a random pool that is at the grill.
Right, a grill that is at the pool.
The grill is at the pool.
Yeah.
Do you, we're not big for pools that aren't in our region.
No.
No, we have tents that we, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you guys this, whether or not you guys wanna hear it. We added tents to it last year or the year before, and we just put a fee on there. It was at my, uh, uh, I just did it because we had it,
And probably.
and I guess we weren't smart enough to think about whether or not we were allowed to, but we did.
We're not. They.
So if we do need legislation, we need to add that to it.
Well, that's why we're, we're basically, yeah, so it's.
What these discussions are for.
Yeah, I don't think you would.
We don't need legislation for that, for that fee?
No, no. Yeah, you just said, you know, you, so this is like for a party. You rent grill at the pool, it doesn't like go anywhere, you can't use it.
Would it be? Right.
It's part of the thing, services, you get the pool, you throw in a menu board or whatever, it's part of what you offer in that arena.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like at the concession.
All, all the other fees, well, okay, I guess we aren't setting prices.
Right.
At the concession and legis, that.
So I just heard it like that.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Yep.
So, fair price, if, so with a, with a waiver, uh, I don't know.
We need a waiver.
I have no idea.
I, I mean, I guess it, it, uh, you know, it also feels like an administrative nightmare. Like if we said ten dollars for a half an hour, because that's how long it'll take you to cook off your family's dinner, 'cause you wanna do burgers and dogs at the pool or whatever.
I feel like if we did, it should be more along the lines of a party rental.
It should be a party rental addition.
A party rental addition, if somebody's renting the pool for two hours and they wanna add that.
Yeah.
But I think just in general, I wanna go cook Reese and I a cheeseburger.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, that's smart, so.
I'm gonna take.
So it's an add-on to the food rental.
As a party, or, or a party one of those.
Yeah.
So we have a thing where like.
Yeah, an after, yeah, or the birthday party, yeah.
Or the birthday party during the pool hours, so you could add it on to that.
Pizza.
Yes.
That's a good idea.
I don't know, it's not.
And, and twenty bucks at the house.
Yeah, of it's, what's it take to fill a tank these days? Thirty, what's it take to get the propane tank, thirty bucks?
Uh, you can fill it for twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
At the propane place, just, just up the, yeah.
Oh, down here, yeah. Yeah, so do we say twenty, in case you use the?
I mean, that's a whole tank. You'd, you'd have to be cooking all day.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's also wear and tear on the, on the.
Yeah, twenty, twenty bucks seems.
Oh.
Twenty seem okay?
I think we, just so you know, I think everything is either tw- I, I, I feel like if we look at the schedule, almost everything's twenty-five, and I'm not trying to be like that person, but I feel like keep it straight across the board, because it's.
Yeah, yeah, if, if we're doing other things, yeah, that would be the range.
That's fine. That's fine.
Twenty-five.
But it's for the whole time, like not an hour or anything like that.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, so we're all good on that, and we'll just say twenty-five. So then there's a follow-up to this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, MPCA has asked about using it for a family fun night, and they have asked if they, if we would waive the fee for.
Yeah. Yeah.
Of course.
Delp.
Of course.
Uh.
Why not?
It's twenty-five bucks, I think.
And, and for the record, we let that, like, when they have arts department, things like that with the tent, we don't, I mean, we typically waive it for them as well.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you know, they, they have two tents of their own.
They have money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, and.
They're in like a.
I'm like, sorry.
Garage.
Yeah.
Why are they in your garage?
Because my wife used to be president of MPCA, and half your crap is in my garage.
I see.
And this is why we are so.
We're so, we're so maybe careful about, you know, public funding of private groups.
Oh, I was, I was told.
But I think they still need to sign off on it, just so we have that. And Jesse had actually told us, like, the days that they are renting the, for family fun night
I know we appreciate great, but.
things like that, we need to have it.
So, let me give you a little more context. They have a catering company that's coming in, and they, and the catering company said they would bring their own propane.
Okay. Yeah, that's okay.
Are they making hot dogs?
I have no idea.
I'm interested if it's hot.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm far less concerned with a professional catering company's wanting to turn it on.
Right, right.
And, and again, I think the amount of people that would actually even rent it, like, if, if MPCA wanted to do it one of the nights or, uh, sip and dip
Sipping beer or something, yeah.
or something like that, I feel like, I think the average regular person at school to rent it is not.
Yeah. Can we put, can we put an age on that, twenty-one or older? I mean, time is seriously about that in some way.
Do we, do we have a minimum age to actually rent a pool? I think we, and, I just.
It should be twenty-five, I'm just kidding.
You have to be a member. Do, do we, do we check ages at all to be a member?
No, you don't. You don't have to be a member. We have two different fees. We have a member and a non-member fee.
Oh, I thought you had to be a member.
Or resident and non-resident, I'm sorry. You do have to be a member.
Yeah. Yeah, she should be a resident or a member.
Yes, yeah, sorry.
People have the, they don't guess pass, they change the money right ahead of the membership, you.
Yes.
Probably, Jason.
You can the same day. They do it all the time.
Oh. You can upgrade it.
Same day, you can do it. Hey, you were, they, I was there when they had the conversation with you about it.
I, I, John, John said, you wanna, you wanna do this instead? I'm always thinking.
Need what, for Kelly to be, to be screwed, uh?
No, she already had a membership, but then I was just gonna get a guest.
No, just add on to hers.
Can I do that?
We don't check it.
Of course. You just gotta go in there and say, don't you know who I am? Alright, moving on. I think, I think we have all those questions answered.
Thank you.
Yes, good for MPCA and twenty-five dollars.
Yes. Perfect.
Yada, yada, yada.
Perfect.
Okay, so, moving back up, does that get us to the end of recreation plus?
Yes, I'm, uh, we're done.
Alright, streets.
Streets, okay, so, the engineering, um, crew took a boat out to look and assess the lakes this week. So that was pretty exciting. I have not seen a report.
Yeah. What kind of boat?
It was.
They used our paddle boat.
Paddle boat.
Remind me to fill you in on that.
Somebody else I hear also.
I saw that.
Help themselves.
Help themselves, yes.
So it is now currently locked up as, um.
Yeah.
It is not a Minerva Park paddle boat. It is for official government use only.
We will be putting a sign up as well. We will actually need.
Okay, our engineers need that to fix our lakes, thank you. So, anyways, they were out doing that. I mean,
Yeah.
the idea of that seems a little ridiculous, but this is what we need to do, okay?
Yeah, they had to go out and do hydrologic study.
Yeah.
You gotta, you can't, can't sound the, the, the depth of the middle of the lake without getting out to the middle of the lake.
Right, so anyways, they did not get stuck. This is good. It's not as bad as we thought. Just kidding. Um, I have not seen, yeah, just.
It's worse.
It's worse.
Yeah, I have not seen a report yet, but that is what they're working on. I think we sent out the official letters for easements for the Jordan Road project, and, uh.
Those were all mailed last week.
Oh, awesome, okay, yeah, okay.
Yes, we actually physically mailed them, all of mine, I saved the village fifty-five cents.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's so right.
Wait, we didn't send those certified mail?
Wait, did I get one?
No. It was only like ten, I don't even think it was ten.
It's not, okay. Okay.
So those went directly to the houses, um, and honestly, it's, everybody already knew about it, and I already talked to a couple of them, so they all have them.
The Jordan, the Jordan Road house didn't get one?
Which one?
Twenty, twenty-seven.
They all got them. That's it, but it's only like, no, it doesn't go down that far.
Okay.
It just goes down to one over from Eddie Bell's, I believe.
Okay, I thought for sure, alright.
No, it's just those tents. Um, the eas, the actual easements that are needed are just from there.
Got it, okay. Um, anyway, so that was sent out, and, um, that's what we're working on. That's all I got for streets. I mean, it seems like, okay.
When I was bid today. It was posted, advertised, whatever. Today was the day. It's, it is posted on our website now.
Okay. What was it?
For Maple.
The mid documents.
Okay.
So, what am I, three weeks?
So, three weeks, we'll find out what's going on with that.
Ooh, fingers crossed.
Um, I think that's all I got. We probably need to have a meeting, but I just, I don't think there's anything to really talk about at this point, unless every, anybody has other suggestions or anything else that we need to focus on. I think we need to kind of power through these big projects first before we, yeah, before we.
They're broken all down. Yeah.
No, I'm with you.
So.
The CCTV that was awarded and all that stuff, so that will be coming around, another thing. I have not heard when or anything like that, but it's roll, I shouldn't say that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I got documents to sign, so that's all coming.
Okay.
As far as CCTV goes.
But yeah, that's all like, I feel like that's not a planning thing. We're just kind of rolling with it, trying to make sure our infrastructure is still okay.
Just sit back.
Um, I got nothing in regards to that. That's all I could think of.
Alright, well then, moving on down the list is legislation. On the packet that was sent out, we got the three from last time, which is permissive funds for the Minerva Lake Road project. We got, uh, affirming the appointment of Officer Ferguson, and we got extending the lease on the temporary municipal offices. Uh, Jesse, you had emailed out a thing today. You wanna tell us about that?
Yes. Yes, sure, and, uh, I'll send a email as well, 'cause I will not be here in a certain amount of time. But we submitted multiple, can't remember what I had, eight, twelve, um, DTE twenty-four applications, which are applications for tax exempt, exemptions owned by municipal corporations. These are like the reserve areas that MI dedicated to us.
Right, we don't have to.
So we did that, thought, you know, problem, the tax department scarily, scarily doesn't know what they're doing. The left hand doesn't know what the right is. They sent back and said, well, all of these are in a TIF, they're already exempt. You have to either remove them for the, from the TIF, or, uh, show us some legislation that says the priority for this tax exemption is the DTE twenty-four application.
Got it.
Okay.
So all this does is say, okay, sure, here is the, well, here, these parcels are all, their first exemption is based on the DTE twenty-four. They're not out of the TIF. It's owned by municipal land, that's it. So, their letter all had like a forty-day timeline, and so, in order to get it back to them in time, I'm asking them to waive ratings and pass this for us.
Right, and so, to, to translate that, right, because. Right, and so, to, to translate that, right, because that, because that land is within the TIF district, where there is no property tax on it, there's. Whatever they call the payment, that is just like property taxes, but isn't, that goes to the TIF.
Yes.
Uh, but we're a municipal corporation, so we shouldn't be bad to pay ourselves.
Exactly.
That nonsense.
Yep.
So this is just something to fix that.
Yep.
Cool.
Anybody have any concerns, raving readings, passing as an emergency to get all that done?
Mm-mm.
All right, good. Then, that brings us to the end of legislation discussions.
Um, and just an FYI on the lease, no, this is quick, this is quick. Um, I did email her to find out when they want the lease signed by us. So she is double checking with the landlord, making sure there's a thirty, sixty, ninety day, whatever. Because right now, it does say intent is to waive the readings, pass this emergency, if we don't need to do it, that's, again, totally up to you guys. The amount is still gonna be the exact same as what we're currently not raising it for the interim. Um, so I know that was a question some people had, so it is pretty straightforward, it's just a matter of whether or not they want it sooner rather than later, because there is a certain amount of time that we have to tell them we're vacating. And I believe that that was like, six months, um, with, yeah, so, we're fine, they know that we're planning on staying, I just don't know if.
Okay.
The sooner we can get it signed, the better, just because it's done and over with, if we know we're gonna do it, I understand people don't wanna waive readings, so we can at least read it once and maybe do some of that. Um, but I'm hoping she has an answer for me before next Thursday, and then, we can decide, you guys can decide what you wanna do with that information, so. I just asked her, what's the latest that we can get the signed lease to you? Because it's a, you know, it's a legislative type thing, so, we'll see what she says.
What's the ETA on the community building at this point?
Well, that's, that's next on the agenda.
Yes, we'll let Eric answer.
I'm just leading into it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, big five touches, Mr. Fisher, update on the community building, ETA, timeline, highlights?
ETA is pretty decent, they are, they're a little behind in a couple areas, but they're gonna catch up, they, we thought the roof would've been sweet, we felt the roof was gonna be on. This past week, but, uh, as with everything, construction these days, a box eclipsed it on the ride, so they had to wait on one box. Almost roofing's laying that way to be installed.
Yeah, it's been here for a little bit, yeah.
Right, it's, it's, but they, they nearly had an update, and they told me for the last meeting this past week, they're gonna have it here soon. You'll see roofing go on, you'll start to see siding go on, it looked pretty sweet when it's all done.
It's already nice.
And, inside, inside, they, uh, they are finishing up drywalling in the administrative areas, they, I was in there Tuesday, had insulation in. Uh, the council chamber looks incredible, it's gonna be more amazing when everything's wrapped up here. Um, I expect, once they get some finishes on, we'll have a nice tour to talk about, and everyone will see it. Building's being fairly secured, they had a fun little barn out incident, got into the upper level structure, they had, they got a barn out, uninjured, he bonked himself up there, got off, we'll just get a picture posted. Little barn out, good luck, was fine, woke up, right on, so, that's good.
Oh, I do barn outs.
Is there, is there a date that we're driving to at this time?
Uh, we're looking at end of August.
End of August.
Yeah, beginning of, and right around there, we should be, we should be done. We had some good news today, we had a small, uh, disagreement with gas company, a couple weeks ago.
I was gonna ask that, yeah.
Um, they were causing me a headache because they were, they sent us, they told us they were gonna pay thirty-four thousand dollars to upgrade the gas line, I would like why, and they're like, because you're gonna use so much gas for your generator, I'm like, well, listen. How does that make sense, we have a big argument, just to shorten it up, we were gonna have an all hands on deck meeting tomorrow, they called me good news, cause after I yelled at them, like, I had a long argument with them earlier than we know last week. My argument was, guys, I get it, but the generator only comes on when everyone's electricity's off, so that means gas isn't running to anyone else's houses, how does that make sense that we can't run our generator at that point in time? Eric, they don't change their mind, he's like, well, come on, it's gonna happen, I guess that doesn't make any sense, the engineer tells me, he took that into account, which I hear he did, I said, I'm all board. I got a call today, wonderful end of the day, and said, hey, we re-looked at everything, wasn't what I said though, but it said, hey, we looked at what all your businesses are using, all the other stuff, and, you know what, you're fine.
Good.
It's okay, fine.
Beautiful.
This is strange, dude. These are the fun little things that just remind everybody that he has been dealing with for probably three weeks, so, it's, it's not.
So, and, and of all, because early September is what we're looking at, which is why we need to extend for a month.
Right.
Because it'll take a little while to move stuff.
Well, we have new furniture coming.
There's still facilities, yeah, we just, the way things are, just someone else doesn't arrive and it pushes it off, right?
Correct.
Eggs.
It looks good so far, but, that's what we're looking for.
All right.
Well, and then, of course, we still have all the technology and all of that kinda stuff, making sure, um, and this is along with that. I don't know your guys' feelings toward this, and Eric, this is my thought towards this, we still have an email issue, everybody's fully aware, do you wanna, go ahead.
Well, now, now would be a good time to reach out to KGT and ask about moving all that stuff to the cloud.
Yes, that's true.
That is, uh, which leads me around to Jesse, Jesse, the last time we talked about moving all of our stuff to the cloud. Uh, someone from your firm said that there were state reasons why we couldn't, and this was maybe six years ago.
Okay, okay.
So, it, it would be.
Perhaps, yeah, hopefully they've checked.
Right.
Yeah, but it was, it would be good to get an opinion on that, and then, if it is, like, there's no good gosh darn reason why we have an exchange server in our building.
Right.
That's just dumb.
Right, no, so, let's look, yeah, let's see what we can do on all that, so, the email thought today was, I, I'm just gonna tell you, I was at my wit's end in the last five or six days with this email thing again, we're just, it is what it is, I'm not gonna go into detail, but. We're still having issues, so, when we move back to the new building, the plan is to go back to, or to go to AT&T, hopefully fiber or something along that, we weren't able to do that in the temporary space, we did try. The reason that we have the issue is because of Breeze Line, they gave us really bad IP addresses, so all of our MinervaPark.orgs were blacklisted. So, there's really no way to go back and unblacklist them, except for to call every, it, it is what it is. So, our thought was, let's get MinervaPark.gov, but my concern about going with MinervaPark.gov is, if the situation isn't really resolved with the IP addresses, those could get blacklisted, so. My thought was, have a really good conversation with AT&T, just wait till we get in the new building and deal with it until we get, um, new IP addresses with AT&T and with the new everything, so.
The last time I looked into getting the dot gov.
Yes.
It's expensive.
We are gonna reach out to, FEMA is able to, chief has a contact that we were gonna reach out to, to find out, um, what they could do to help us get it.
It was, it was like fifteen hundred bucks or something like that.
Why?
Because you have to pay that to the government to certify that you're the government.
Right.
That makes so much sense.
Right, we're the government. So, so we are going to, we are gonna look at it, and if it is our only option, I'm gonna say money well spent, because as of right now, we can't operate correctly.
Well, so, I don't wanna get involved, because I, I don't actually care that much, but they, they should be able to provide you static IP addresses.
We have gone through Barracuda, we have gone through, um, I don't even know what that means, but I was told it was gonna solve our problems or something.
What you're referring to is that, yeah, so, the providers, we could pay specifically for like a set of five, ten, whatever amount of IP addresses we need, we have to pay additional money.
The IP addresses are no longer the problem, we have already been blacklisted from.
Well, so, if we got new IP address, if we changed everything out, it was partially, I think it would solve the issue.
They're saying that it's the MinervaPark.org that's been blocked.
Blocked from who?
Everybody.
Like Franklin County and all of that, so, it doesn't, yeah, I mean, it's dot, Ohio dot gov.
We, we, we got, we got largely blacklisted due to the foul with WOW.
So it's not the IP addresses anymore.
The what with WOW?
Like last, yeah.
They gave us, they gave us a hundred, they, they gave us like a set of, of, the, the dynamic IPs that we got originally.
Yeah.
Were some foul IPs.
From like spam.
And so, what, what, yeah, so, so, those got integrated to our system and they were, they were.
They were.
Everyone else's, everyone else's stuff got a hold of us and we got on the blacklist.
Well, see, that's, that's another dumb thing, why the hell are we hosting to our own IPs? Right, that's, that's another, and I don't think, our, our, our website shouldn't be hosted on our own IP addresses.
So, I don't disagree with that, I don't think it is, I think the issue goes back to the domain and dot org, right? And so, it got associated, and I don't have all the details, I'm giving you, I'm giving you some side notes, so, because, look, it needs to be fixed, I know it'll be dangerous, and it's one of those things that I think.
I don't.
Yeah.
You can, you have to redo your domain, I don't know that the, the domain's linked, you can get that fixed over time, but, the IPs have to be re-associated.
Right.
Uh, I know enough about this stuff to know that those words don't make sense. If you guys have emails of all this, of what people have told you, if you could forward them to me.
I'm sure we do.
And I would love to pick through it and figure out what the bullshit is.
Okay, well, I.
Because, yeah.
I'll have a conversation with you, um, we have a, we have the potential of having a meeting with KGT to go over some additional options to try to get our emails to go through, that if you have any interest in sitting through it, because.
If you let me know what it is, if it works with my work schedule.
I'll look at, I think it's gonna be next week sometime.
I'll do my best to. I'll, I'll do my best to bite my tongue. Uh, yeah, okay, moving on, any updates on links, and I guess we heard, they came, they, they boated, they did some bathymetric things.
Yes.
And moving on.
Beautiful.
We heard the Jordan Road update, that, uh.
Bids.
Uh, not easements, uh.
Bids.
Bids are, bids are a couple weeks out, and we have access agreements in the mail.
And what we'll do is schedule, as soon as we get all of those in, um, we open them, we do all of that, I'm pretty positive we're going through, um, I shouldn't say we're, we're going through BitExpress.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll open it the same way that we did the last time, and then we'll get together after that and go over all of them with Mike's recommendation, and hopefully we have some.
Yep, the next one on the big five touches, uh, the outbuildings, the shelter house, the concrete looks great, wanted to come in to do the rest.
One of our fun emails that hasn't been going through for the last two weeks, and I just assumed he was on vacation, um, I was gone for three days, sent him emails before I left, came back, and it was Memorial Day, so, um, no, I've been sending emails since the twentieth, and he has not received one of them.
Oh.
Except we were communicating, um, so it has just been ordered today.
Okay.
So usually about two weeks is what he said, he had no idea that the concrete was done, he said he had me on his message to, he hadn't heard from me in two weeks, so he's trying to figure out what's going on.
Got it.
What?
So, um, and again, we've been communicating, and all of a sudden, it just doesn't work, and that's been, that's been the new issue, is I'm communicating with people and all of a sudden, it just goes radio silent. That happened with the, um, roofer, that's happened numerous times, so, um, so, did communicate with him today, he does know that we're still having issues, so. Um, he is supposed to give me an estimated time of, um, building, and he said he would hope to have that to me tomorrow, that I'll, I'll be able to let you guys know when they're coming out to, to build it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have talked to the resident next door, and I have gotten some, um, I think we're on the same page as to the fencing that we want to put between the two. Um, we're thinking, I'm thinking, I haven't measured it yet, but we're thinking it's probably about six to eight, um, eight-foot pieces, six foot tall. Um, she had originally wanted wood, I'm thinking vinyl's probably better for the upkeep, as much as wood's probably a little less expensive, um, whether or not it needs stained or this or that, I, I'm not, you know, so. We're not sold on anything, but the current plan, because it's one straight line, is to have our maintenance staff put it together and do it. Um, and that's that, I don't know, that, I do not wanna do that until after the shelter is built, only because we don't want any damage to it. Um, so, but I've met with her a couple times, and her and I have been communicating with, um, some desires of what she wants and what she likes, and that is the current plan, because it's not anything that's out of, um. Out of sight, I mean, it, it's perfectly fine for whatever, it matches what everybody else is doing. Um, and then the shel- the garage thing. Um, it's still in Mike's hands, we haven't really heard much of that, Jesse and I had talked about if there's any options, we, I did look again today to try to find somebody on the bid. I have not been able to locate anybody.
Okay.
I did email Maureen, um, not sure that she has it, but I don't have her direct number, so I'm gonna see if I can locate a different phone number, Maureen actually heads that.
Oh, okay.
Um, and asked her if I'm, if I'm just not, so maybe Eric and I can try to work on that and see if we can find a company that does do more of like the. I know we found the shelter one a long time ago, and I'm not finding that one now, so I feel like I'm doing something wrong. So, to try to find a company that's on the state bid.
Okay.
So, that's what we're looking for, so we're no further, I'm just, we're gonna be blunt, no further on the shelter, that, or, I'm sorry, the garage, that.
Just a reminder, uh, MPCI, I forgot, had asked me to remind you all that they have money set aside if we, if they can add on to the building or something.
Yes. And that, I, you know, I think we've always kinda talked about that a little bit, we can always look at it as an option to add on, and then the next part to, you know, it, it's, have no idea. We're, we're still in the starting stages of can, you know, where are we at on this, and I'm really not any further on that. On that, structure should be done by the end of, end of June, but I'm hoping by middle of June. What was the third one?
Uh, no, the next down the list was electric hookup, I don't know that I have the context of what that.
Okay, so the electric hookup, my understanding, or not my understanding, um, it has to go up bid, so, we don't hear, the, the part that you guys don't wanna hear and the blunt part to this is, and maybe this is something Eric, no. Um, well, yeah, we got the two estimates, and they were both over fifty thousand dollars, so the options are, um, we cut some stuff out and do them completely separate in a different thing and keep it under fifty thousand, and we can move on with life.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, you know, I don't wanna piece him apart because that I'm not doing, but if we do wanna take out the amphitheater or something along those lines, because we might do something different, and just do the fountain places. That's up to you guys, we could get that done and just get it moved forward, we have the ability to do that.
I'd, I'd like, I'd would prefer to have the shelter, not the shelter, the.
I'm sorry, the fountain's in the shelter.
Amphitheater pulled out of that, just because it's part of a different project and a different set of money.
Do you think that's okay to do, if we're having electric installed, to just do the fountains and the basketball court? The amphitheater in itself is, is a completely different project, and probably would be done at a different time anyways.
Yeah. No, the, those are different, it's like when you try and break apart a construction project for the same, do it.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, well, the other part to this is, there's going to be a fifth one that we really haven't talked about, or fourth or whatever we're on, is gonna be over by the, or over by the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tied, it goes to the side.
So there's gonna be the electric for that, we haven't even started that.
Yeah, but that, that's a separate, yeah.
That's completely separate too.
Yeah, they deserve.
And since we already have the bid on that building, it looks like, then.
So.
More than likely.
I, I, so if you guys are okay with that, um, I've already gotten two estimates, do I have to do three estimates if it's over thirty thousand, or is it recommended for three?
Yeah.
I have two.
I don't think it's, I don't think there's anything.
Cause I thought there was something, if it was thirty thousand, you were supposed to get, or over ten thousand or thirty thousand, you were supposed to get three.
If, if it's a policy, it'll be set by, by this, this body, by this, by the village.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's nothing anymore.
Or maybe, okay, I don't, and we may not have it, I may have read that on somebody else's.
I don't say that, I've seen. There.
Um, so if you guys are okay with that, then I can work with Je- Jeff and just get moving on it.
Get it done.
And just, there's, so that answers that question, I can deal with that tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the next one? We don't know yet for the.
For the, for the maintenance garage, the most ideal place that we had discussed and is. You guys could probably describe it better than me, but over by the basketball court, but behind, next to that house, in like that open.
But that, that, well, we can be the pump house, yeah, of course. Is that, is that, well, you can be the pub house, like, or.
Yep, yep, that's it.
Yeah, and the exact location, how far it would go back is gonna be to be determined once we get a, you know, whether we get a contractor out there or once we get um some testing from the dirt and, you know. How much, if you go too far back, electric's gonna cost you even more. Water lines are gonna cost you even more. Maybe I'm crazy, but I'm assuming the further back you go away from that stuff, it gets.
Right. There may be power back.
There may be power back there from that neighborhood.
There may be, yeah.
Because it's, there's an A P easement back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, so, yeah.
Repaving?
Of who?
I don't know. That's just, I was on the list. I don't know. It's Mark's list. I'm just working with.
It's on the list.
All of those. Um, all I'm gonna say about repaving at this point, I don't know if that means the.
I think one of the great projects.
It's all twenty, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. We are, we are, and actually, let's, let's say this. Um, I have reached out to Ben, which is our grant writer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the OPWC loan um deadline, I believe, is September first, so I have reached out to him to potentially work on some um funding opportunities for some road projects because they are significantly higher than we were expecting for like Minerva Lake Road from Valley.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that has actually started this past week. So we've been working with Mike and Ben and Jeff and everybody.
Next down the list was code rewrite. I think last this body spoke, we had some notes and passed it back and I think we've gotten uh, any updates since then?
No, uh, we were waiting to see with Airbnb stuff wins. My my intent was to bring everything together at once.
Okay. Gotcha.
Once you're all done, we could all present it in a, I I wanna get to reading, so once we're all ready, final draft, we're ready.
Beautiful, then let's, let's finish the Airbnb conversation. So most of the people here were in the legislative committee meeting on Thursday, uh, where the general appetite was to be mute on that topic. Uh, generally because we felt like whatever problems may arise, we handle in other ways in our code. Uh, but we also didn't make a final say because councilperson calls you seem to have big opinions and feelings, so we wanted to let you have your say.
Hang on, before we go. Can you explain, cause this is one of the things I didn't know coming into that meeting either.
Yeah, and I had searched.
Legally, what are we allow, I I know that there's current, and I'm just, you know, after we left from the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I actually did go home and Google, cause I had no idea what you guys were talking about. Um, I'm just gonna people on, I I didn't know, I didn't look into it and I didn't realize that government was potentially, I mean, after, I explained it. I did go home and read through several of the articles and several of the other places that basically put a hold on it for a year until they they saw what state was gonna do. So, um, is, can you go over that, just?
Right.
That part of it?
That part of it, just so we know what we can, what we can do.
So as of right now, you could basically do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It all might be for naught because in two months, the state went past something that says you can't do. Now, we think, cause we represent a lot of local governments, that it's really not their business and that it is up to the local municipality to be able to determine how they wanna handle.
Correct.
Short-term matters, but that would be a fight that would take a couple years. Um, you can, I mean, you could create, I'm sure you went over all the options, create a registry, you could allow only uh owner, owner-present rentals. For sure, you could bar uh homes that are built solely, they rented for these without an owner in them. We would just need to know sort of the direction to go because you really do have it. It it is, in essence, totally up to you.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's like typical, so.
I don't think there is a typical.
There's not. I mean, you, here's what is, you think.
That was the other thing that I looked, cause I looked even up in like the Toledo and Cleveland, that most of them said that they were holding off, I mean, most of them were saying that they were holding off waiting, but isn't it like that house bill has already passed, but it hasn't, which is why it has that, but it goes.
It's like kicked into a committee. It's like sitting away in a committee for war. Um, I would say after looking at like a hundred of these, if I were, if I wanted to pass something and I was concerned, I think the easiest and most effective thing is to say.
Okay.
You can have a short-term rental, but you, the homeowner, have got to be home. That eliminates like ninety-nine percent of your problem. There's not a weird party house. There's not loud noises, cause they have to face their neighbors. They're not some absentee person from out of town. That's, I mean, that's just purely policy, but that solves your problem, if you have a problem.
Okay.
That feels way more restrictive than I'd ever be open to.
Why?
Because I think people have a right to do with their home what they wanna do with their own. It's their property. Right? And and if there are big parties, we have, we have, we already have, we already have ordinances about noise, right? So we can handle noise through that method, right? If there's, you know, people driving inappropriately to and from, we have traffic laws. If there's, you know, if if people are renting it to do human trafficking out of it, there are laws about human trafficking, right? I just think that any control you put on it is.
But that puts more burden on our police department to be able to do that.
And you think.
Well, I would say creating a registration and all this is gonna put more burden on.
What about the register?
Yeah, and anything you do is gonna create a burden on the village, right? Administratively and enforcement, right? You know, and then and then to think, so, you know, so if we make it such that, you know, we'll take that that restriction, right? So now we need to, you know, have a registry, right? We would need to monitor their listings. We would need, you know, there's, you know, we would need John, John Canty out there checking to make sure that the owner is actually around when the, when it's rented. What a flipping pain in the ass to to get what out of it though. Like, I don't see.
Ask you this question, what do we, what do we, what do we don't want more than?
So, this is, this is my.
A nuisance, a nuisance property is what I don't want.
Yeah, some, I I I'm just gonna go from what you, we've seen in the news a couple of times. Um, locally in Columbus, you, at eighteen years old, most people will rent Airbnbs. There have been a couple, this isn't something that happens every weekend, but around prom time and different things like that, you have high school eighteen-year-olds going and renting properties. In Columbus, this has happened and there, it's, there's been some shootings at Airbnb. Like, the article actually says eighteen-year-old rents Airbnb and there's a local shooting. That's not exactly what's at fun.
I would consider that more of a America problem than a Airbnb problem.
And, and so.
It is an America, but that's the thing is like, that that can be an America problem, but also there's multiple conversations about property owners where it's a nuisance property because there's lax legislation on the books and now you have to deal with it and somebody is profiting from that. Like a large corporation that has many Airbnbs and.
How about we ban investment, you know, retail or real estate? I mean.
I mean, we could do that either.
Yeah, you can't really do that, but what you can do is make sure that it it's, the property is aligned with like the values of our village, which is like family oriented, to make sure that we're not, we're not creating a nuisance in the village by being lax on our legislation. And I would rather kind of be preventative in this way as opposed to reactionary in that if everything around us is addressing this issue and we're, we're a pocket where we don't address it and it becomes like a popular thing for investors, it'll be harder to deal with on the back end.
What I'm saying is that all of, okay, describe to me the actual behaviors that you are concerned with.
Parties.
Okay, so so by parties, it would be traffic and noise, right?
Correct.
Okay, we have, we have regulations for both of those already.
Okay, but by the time we handle it, it's still gonna be traffic and noise that somebody has to deal with as opposed to being like, hey, this is, there's potential for that, we just.
And a person can have a graduation party and have traffic and noise.
But you can say that about anything else, but then why have, but then why have a, a code enforcement officer then? What is the point of that if that is to?
Right, so we, we do have. We do have things that we do track, but we're, we're talking about common problems. We're not talking about, the the behaviors that that you've described so far are common behaviors that we already have ordinances to handle.
By that logic. Okay.
Right? So adding another one to say, oh, yes, and also double especially for sure if you're renting is.
But if you, by that same logic, why not? It's the same logic. We already have that. Why not put something in there if we're already?
Well, because there comes extra baggage with it, right? Now there's administration hassle. Now there's a cost to running that as a program. Now there, now we have to have people monitoring that situation, spending time and effort and dollars.
I would almost be concerned if we're talking about the values and morals of the village. I'd almost be concerned about First Amendment, freedom of expression issues.
With an Airbnb, no.
Uh, people will litigate for anything. I'm just saying.
I think.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think freedom of expression, but I would, I would say that, you know, you could maybe make a uh.
Property fixing case.
Yeah, I was gonna do a Fourth Amendment with a, with a seizure, right? Because you are seizing a portion of the value of their property by disallowing a reasonable behavior.
That's true.
Yeah, this is just a random, and we brought this up last week, but we're having the same conversation and I don't know if you are aware of this, but in real estate, most homeowners, when they take out their mortgage, mostly MHA, there is a document that they currently sign and I would guarantee you that most of these homes, not the old section, but the new, well, maybe some of the old.
Anything that's refinanced or sold in the last four years.
Yeah, they actually sign a document that states, and I I really should have brought it, but it actually states that your home cannot be used as an Airbnb. So what does the village, like, I mean, those are not necessarily, maybe their public record, like, if we found that somebody was doing it, but yet has nothing to do with.
Insurance, insurance is a bigger one though, because the insurance company, the government, it's a company that's great insurance from a commercial standpoint. If you, you have to get specific insurance to handle Airbnb coverage.
The thing. Correct.
Right.
I mean, owners that have Airbnbs as whether investment vehicles or as a cottage industry, you know, they're generally good caretakers of their property. We have those, we have those extreme examples out there where people are partying and doing crazy stuff and they trash a house. Those are people that aren't really following rules, don't really care for the first class. It's not something they can prevent even necessarily with legislation, right?
That's where I'm at and I, yeah, people not, we're not, I doubt we'll be able to, to effectively stymie this from happening by the.
I mean, you can't stop crying. This is the thing is, but the, the thing is, you can't, that's like a philosophical argument about like, well, we can't legislate anything, well, bad guys are still gonna get a hold of guns, so why, why are we gonna regulate guns or do all of this stuff?
Exactly.
Right, it's not.
Sure, whatever.
Which is, which is why.
Fair, I would say that we should bring the hammer down on the ones we already have, which would, we could, we could sue, we could, we could do civil nuisance lawsuits against these people down in Franklin County. We could do any number of things if it's.
But is that gonna end up being more expensive than just having legislation on the book and having something that's ea- easily enforceable?
I would say it would, it would be more expensive, but it would also be more effective because then we will have a court order that will never allow them to do it again, whereas if they just register, I did, we take their license away.
And then they get it again.
If it, if they, if they do a bad thing and then what? They do it again.
Well, I think the other question that I had was, what are we considering a short-term rental? Is it thirty days? Is it one day?
Right, there's all the details.
Yeah, so, you know, what are the most concerned, and maybe the answer is all of the above, or, you know, not.
Yeah. It does have to be, it is less than thirty. It is thirty days or less.
Thirty days or less. Because I mean, I guess that's the question, you know, if somebody goes to Florida every single year and they're only gone in June and they do a Airbnb for the month of June and let somebody stay in there cause it's a prime month, is that an issue? I mean, maybe it's not.
They may have four people come and go over the course of a month, but it's only one month. Again, I would, I would, the the discussion I would most like to entertain is what are the behaviors we are looking to uh dis, uh disincentivize? And make certain that we have systems in place to appropriately disincentivize those behaviors. And if we do, then I don't see a need to add a specific regulation for this. That's, that's my thought.
And everything might be moved next month anyway if the Ohio Senate takes this up.
Right.
Right.
Do you have a thought, Jason? I'm gonna call you off.
Uh, I mean, I think it's the same as what I said last, last time we had this discussion. I'd rather wait until we know what the decision is than putting time into this at this point.
All right, I I think that's a fair resolution at this mo- moment. We wanna put a pin in it. Once the State House is resolved, this body can can reengage in this conversation should it choose to.
How, what's the timeline on that? Is it really two months or are they gonna just?
I mean, it could just, it could just die. It could never be talked about again.
Because it's, it's just in committee, right? So it hasn't, it hasn't gone to the, the House floor and it hasn't gone to the Senate floor, right? It's just in committee.
Yeah.
I was just thinking we could put it into planning and zoning.
What about if you just said no Airbnb, no short-term rental, just leave it at that?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Because, because again. Oh, we can't do it, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
I think that people have a right to use their property to their advantage. Don't you, don't you think that if you, your house is in condition such that you know that every fourth weekend of the month, you're somewhere else and you can gain an extra three hundred dollars a month into your budget by renting it out that weekend? Why should we disallow that?
I would, I would be here to say there probably are people that live in this village that goes to Florida through, I'm not saying that they rent it out, but they, they're, I mean, and I shouldn't just say Florida, but they go south um for several months and who knows if they are doing it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things I wanna do with my property and I'm not allowed to do it, right?
Like what?
Yeah.
Like what?
I wanna do what I wanna do with my house, whatever I wanna do, and I don't wanna answer anybody, just cause I pay taxes.
Well, the, the upside, or you know, the solution to your problem is to go to the town, right? There's, there's way fewer things, way fewer rules in incorporated attachments, right? So we are in a village, we do have zoning codes. What I'm saying is that the concerns that have been raised for this particular concern or this particular issue of short-term rental, each specific concern, we have other controls for.
And I will say that, um, we've had numerous graduation parties and we've had numerous people call the police just because there's too many cars parked outside, so it it happens, I mean.
But you can't, nobody can ticket you.
And those are the graduation parties.
Right, but you can't ticket anybody for, what are you gonna do? Sorry, you're parking, that's not legal.
No, it's not illegal, but how about you?
Well, let's change of subject.
Yeah.
Last Saturday night, a car parked on the wrong side of the street in front of the playground, cop rolled right on by, didn't, didn't, didn't even like flash their light, didn't, didn't get him in there.
Or somebody on the playground?
Uh, no, and it was after dark too. It was, it was like nine o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you could kick delp in the shins and say that.
They parked the wrong way. Well, I can tell you they got another one that night, but that's not where it was, because I know you went there.
Yeah, people parked on the wrong side of the street, right in front of the don't park here sign, oh, that gets my, gets my craw.
Well, how come, why, why do you get to say who gets to park where?
Because we already have ordinances for it.
Right, because somebody wasn't on council to block that.
Because, why? Because the, the thing that we are looking to control is that there is always ample space to move, to travel down our roads, which is why we only allow parking on one side. We have a designated side, which is the other side and not that side. So again, back to that's how that is.
Mayor's other.
Yes, mayor.
While we're talking about parking.
Yeah.
On the courts.
Cold, yeah, the cold side.
If people are parking on both sides of the courts because there are no, no parking on this side of the street and we have people parking randomly in both directions on courts, what?
Will you ticket?
Well.
There's no signs. There's no signs.
Anywhere on the courts. I just came from there.
I mean, there's no signs. You mean, you mean the, you mean the.
No parking on the side of the street or.
The circles, the cold side.
Right, so like Berry, not Berry Lane, uh.
I'm in the new section, so.
Well, oh.
Well, there's room, I'd say to those courts, there's not enough room to park, I mean.
That is exactly what the problem is and they're doing it.
Yeah.
So if they're, if they're blocking people's driveway, it's one, that's dramatic.
It's courts.
They're getting out, but they're not really getting out. It's taking them, you know, you can't just back out of your car. I did just come through there. It wasn't an issue just now because I would have taken a picture. So maybe what I can do is just grab a couple pictures before our next whatever and maybe we need to talk to John.
We say, so we say like, are we talking about Berry Lane? Are we talking about the old section?
No, new section. New section, there's no signs anywhere in the courts.
New section, yeah.
Okay, so, well, that's because, that's because it's a one side and you can park on that side. If there's space, you're not blocking your neighbor's driveway. It's a difference issue, a lot of those, you don't have enough space.
Yeah.
There's a.
Yeah, there's only two courts.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a problem.
I think the one court's a little bigger than the other one, but.
They're blocking people's driveway, then that's a, that's a police action. You can't block your, the apron of someone's, you know, entrance, so there's.
It's not, they're not parking in front of the entrance.
Cotton quail.
But there's like, they may be parked in front of their house and the neighbor across from them is also parked in front of that house.
They often look at.
So now there's two cars and only room for one, instead of, there's usually everywhere else, it's kind of car and room for two, sort of.
I think the answer is just to, just to plant signs on, signs on one side.
Right, just to keep people confused, right?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I mean, again, it's just one of those things that I, I think we need to, it's an addressing issue. It's been brought to my attention, so I wanna make sure you guys know.
If I can speak to the Airbnb concerns, I think maybe what, you know, this is fine, Danny, I, I think this is not something obviously gonna be solved in a short-term discussion standpoint. And it may be that it needs to come up again, it may need to be, there's a number of avenues. Um, you know, it's the pleasure of this council as to how you'd like to proceed, um, but if there needs to be more debate, perhaps we do this to put a piece separately, because it is, I would say it is complicated. I see there's a lot of details that the council needs to decide on as to what preferences and not preferences are.
Yeah, so I, I think from a perspective of the code rewrite, I think what we had agreed on moments ago was that we will put a pin in it to wait to see how the state lands.
Okay.
And bring it up again the next time this body has that appetite.
Perfect.
Weekly, I'm guessing.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Maybe fortnightly.
Two weeks, we'll see.
What else is on there?
Uh, good question. I surfed away. July second, that's the wrong document.
Cause we already did Lee from Louisville.
Uh, no, that was it. That was the end.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah.
Okay, second.
All right, let's get that kicked out here. I was aiming, I was aiming for eight o'clock.